Good evening and welcome to the City of Pinot Planning Commission, our regular meeting for Monday, November 27, 2023. There are several ways to watch the meeting. One is in person here with us at the Pinot City Council Chambers at 2131 Parrish Street. You can also watch it live on Channel 26. You can stream it live on the city's website. And you can watch it via Zoom video conference or at https://zoom.us/join with a webinar ID of 86505375301. You can call in via area code 669-900-6833 or area code 253-215-8782 or via area code 346-248-7799. If you still need any assistance watching, you may contact Planning Manager David Hannam at 500-724-8912 or at dhannam@ci.pinoal.ca.us. I would like to raise a call to order. And everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The land acknowledgement. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Aloney people who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aloney land, the land that Pinot sits upon their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Item B3, Planning Manager Hannam, would you like to roll call, please?
Commissioner Lam Julian? Commissioner Sandoval?
Present.
Commissioner Bender?
Present.
Commissioner Manis?
Here.
Commissioner Benuelos?
Here.
Vice Chair Martinez, he's absent. And Chair Benzouli?
Here.
Let the record show that we have six members of the planning commission, and we can take action on any item for tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you. Agenda item C, Citizens to Be Heard. The public may address the planning commission items that are within its jurisdiction and not otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning commissioners may discuss the matter brought to their attention, but by the state law, action must be deferred to a future meeting. Five minutes will be allowed. Just, Justin, is there anyone with citizens to be heard?
Oh, hi.
Great, hi. Thank you for coming.
Sorry, I found out about this meeting just a quick minute ago, so I decided to come. I've been wanting to come and meet all of you guys. My name is Raquel Contreras, and I own Uptown Yard, which is just down the street from you guys. It's a little empty lot that is next to the corner lot, 2301 San Pablo Avenue. I just wanted to sort of introduce myself and talk about the situation. So if you guys have a moment to listen to me, that'd be great. So I acquired this property, and I will pass around maybe some images that maybe you can get familiar with it if you guys don't mind, you guys would like to see it. Can I pass it or? So I acquired the lot, I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but it's 2337. There was the history behind it. There was a brick-and-mortar building, two-story floor, and called Drexel Drugs, 1830 through 1989. Loma Prieta's earthquake happened, and it knocked it down. So the property owner used it to store his equipment. There was a gas station right next door, which you're probably very familiar with because it's city-owned. It's been sitting empty for 30 years. And it was a gas station. And the history behind it was that in order to do a cleanup, they, the city, or between mediation between the city and the gas station, they had to drill some borings and clean the well and test the soil. So they needed the access through my property. So they dug the borings, but, oh, and on top of that, as you can see, there is a trash can container, little shed, that they used for this. So after 1996, after everything was completed, they forgot about it. Nothing was done about it. So now, they built another trash facility for the vicinity and the business community in that shopping or the parking lot right there to share. So it's a 20 by 20 storage shed for garbage. But the old trash container was left there. It was knocked down. So there is an easement between my property and the city property, and nothing has been done. I've been through two city managers, and no one wants to reassess the easement. No one has contacted the city manager, the new city manager, or the mayor so that they can help me through this. In the meantime, nothing has been done or invested in doing something for the business community. We have a beautiful downtown that I value, and so do the residents. And the economic viability for a downtown is to have viable businesses. I do believe that residents are thriving. They are very anxious to have more businesses. You're losing a lot of businesses, of potential businesses, to start here because there is a lack of density with business and density with shoppers. They'd rather go to South Alito, Oakland, San Francisco, Walnut Creek, Lafayette, because they're beautiful, their downtowns are gorgeous. They've got very many retails, a lot of restaurants that you might want to go to. So with that said, I'm trying to make something out of my little tiny property because it's in a beautiful setting. Right now, as you may know, retail is really going down. The old brick-and-mortar restaurant is a failure. It doesn't work anymore. It's too expensive, too costly. Everything going up there is just, it's, businesses that are in the restaurant will fail within six months, and another half will fail within the five years. I'm trying to make it accessible for everyone, bringing in artists, musicians.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. That is your time, unfortunately.
I want to take care of this easement. We don't need two trash can facilities. I want to use one for the city.
So, yeah, no, I'm trying to understand, so what the ask is. I mean, I understand that, I know the property, and I know, look at the pictures right now.
I need help. I need support.
You asked to get rid of the trash enclosure?
I need to have the city reassess the easement and give it back to me so that I can remove that trash facility and also assistance with the permission of the city so that I can use the city-owned trash structure there. I don't need another trash. I can walk 10 feet across and use it, like all the other, like my neighbor does. I don't need it right there.
Okay.
It's just prime real estate. I mean, I can make, do something else. Yeah, yeah.
I have a question for staff on this. Isn't there a process for her to do this? She just fills out the application, and you guys kind of deal with it? In terms of this easement thing?
So I can briefly answer your question. This item's not on the agenda tonight. And really, it's within the jurisdiction of the city council. That's who you should, the planning commission doesn't have any ability to grant any of the requests you're making. But the property over there has a reciprocal easement agreement that's shared between this property, the city-owned property, and the adjacent properties, and it's one easement. So that easement also includes that parking lot over there for the reciprocal access and parking. So removing the easement is not necessarily something that the city wants to do because that's a shared parking easement for that area. You know, it's possible to amend the easement, but there are multiple parties involved. It's not just the city. You also have to get the bank's approval over there. That is another party to that reciprocal easement there. So that's a short, a very high-level agreement. And so I would just say to the speaker, I really think your comments are perhaps better addressed to the city council because the planning commission doesn't really have any ability to move that forward.
The other thing, I would like to at least get support on what to do there because there's no movement happening with that empty corner, and I haven't gotten any support.
Well, I mean, from staff perspective, I mean, if, I mean, we've kind of talked about this easement before. And first, we would, we, I mean, I can talk to the Public Works Director, won't be back until next week. But I can speak with him to see if the city, if a new easement can be drawn because there will be, there needs to be easements around that property because we have joint access to the property lot, the sidewalks and all that encompass that area as well. I know that you have a garbage structure on your property already, so it's just something that we would need to take a look at. And the city would have to sign off on that. So there'd be a whole dedication process that would have to go through. I mean, new easements would have to be drawn up by engineers and all that kind of stuff. So it's not, I'd say the city doesn't, it's just, it's a process, it's a pretty long process.
Well, the process that I, since I've requested, has been three years already.
But there has been nothing, I don't, I don't know if you've received, we've received anything in writing from you regarding that?
Yes, I did, with Ignacio de la Rosa. He's no longer here. Ignacio de la Rosa.
Oh, Hector, okay. So it's probably in the redevelopment files where that request is. So if you could, if you could find that request that you sent to Hector and send it to me, and then I'll get the ball rolling and see where we need to go for that easement, and then you can come through me.
Okay, the previous city manager, he's gone too, but.
Yeah, so we have an interim, but we can, we can, we can meet with him. But if we can get the request restarted back up again, we'll have the ability to go through it a little faster.
Also, public art funding.
Okay, I think, yeah, we've kind of got the extent of the citizens to be heard.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your coming and talking to us. I wish you luck, and it sounds like going to the city council or working with Commission Manager Hannam.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, I have, I guess, a point of inquiry. There were some questions the petitioner made with regards to who they could reach out to the city in regards to economic development and with regards to just getting things in contact in general. For people in the future who are in a similar position, does the city have a dedicated contact person for whatever economic development stuff we've managed to get set up as part of the economic development plan yet? And what department should people in that position reach out to?
I can answer that for you. Basically, economic development, now that Hector is gone, has fallen into community development. So Lily Whalen is now the Community Development and Economic Development Director. And so there is an economic development strategy the city did adopt, and that's something that we're working for, we're working on right now. But community development would be the place where people would need to call to get any ball rolling that they were talking about for economic development.
Great, thanks. And also, because I didn't mention this earlier during roll call, this would probably be the point where I'd mention my usual sent-out ex parte message to my mailing list that this meeting was happening, what was going to be discussed.
Okay. Justin, are there any more citizens to be heard?
Yes, there's one hand raised online, a person with the phone number ending in 5748. When you're ready, please press * 6 to unmute.
And Justin, can you put the timer up on the screen? Or someone?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, my name is Anthony, a longtime resident of over 40 years in Pinot. And I have a few items to address the commissioners and Mr. Hannam and the city staff. And half of these have been brought up before with no resolve and no response from the staff, from the mayor of Pinot, the city council. They don't seem to listen to the public that shows up at these meetings or calls in. They cut them off in a dismissive manner. And that's probably a good part, a half of the problem, when things aren't getting addressed by the staff or the council because they don't take the public citizens of Pinot seriously in terms of their input and engagement. Case in point, the street lighting problems, streetlight outages and timers are still dysfunctional in our city up and down Pinot Valley Road. Half of the Green Lantern decorative lights are working on somewhat properly with two or three single-lamp outages on the Speltz-Tizer side of the I-80 Pinot Valley Road strip. But on the Trader Joe's Shopping Center side, the lights are one lag, one hour behind in timers with daylight savings, and they don't go on till like 6:30 at night. So it's pitch black out there from about quarter to five to 6:30. Case in point, there was a big accident out there two weeks ago. It didn't show up yet on the police blotter, and maybe certain things don't get shown on the police blotter for different reasons. Who knows? But there was a tow truck there, and they towed two cars away, and it was probably because of the poor blacked-out lighting there on the street. It's pitch black, right in front of the ingress egress of Parko and Maud's Trader Joe's driveways in the middle of Pinot Valley Road was the big accident there about two weeks ago, about 6:00 PM in the evening. The other lights are still out up and down San Pablo Avenue. There are two or three light outages. Again, I'll be more specific. I said they were down past Sugar City. It's at 920 San Pablo Avenue at the Sunnyview Plaza, next to the old dog shelter. I may add that unbeknown to some people in the city, they're not privileged, but I found out recently that they changed hands again. So it's another switcheroo, like what happened or is happening with Safeway, Tara Hills Center. There's a new owner, and it's not Fix-It Animal Shelter there. But there are two streetlights between that Sunnyview Plaza and the Amelia Italian Restaurant on the west side of the street that have been out for over a year now, to be reported by several people several times. So, you know, this system and programs that all these people are putting in place, whether it's the Beehive program or some of the kind of software, that's great to have these, but none of them are functioning properly. Mr. Director Mishra said it was only up to 60% functionable. Why do we have a program that has been on the drawing board for over a year and is still only 60% functionable? So we can have an excuse for accidents, people's health and safety up and down the streets on Pinot Valley Road and San Pablo Avenue? And also, I would like to ask why we haven't got our new trash cans that were promised to us by Michelle Fitzer and the last Public Works manager in and around Adobe Road, Pinot Valley Dog Park, and the Adobe Barbecue Grove. There are about a dozen of them, but the newer trash cans all go in the highly, more highly visible ones down by the City Hall, Fernandez Park, and Bayfront Park. Get the brand-new recyclable green trash cans, yet we don't have covers on half of the cans out there by the dog park. It's a health issue, and nobody seems to care, although they were budgeted and put somewhere. And I guess they got lost too, just like the signs that the city locked.
30 seconds, sir.
Different things. And I'd like equal time because I couldn't show up in person like the other lady did on the dais that got more than her five minutes because she stood up there and asked several of the commissioners for answers and the staff that took the extra few minutes on the dais to get a reply there. So I would like a reply to some of these. And lastly, why the Adobe Road Trail is still not being repaired by Mr. Hannam, who stated several months ago.
Sir, if you could wrap it up, please. Sir?
Would look into the Adobe Road Trail behind the dog park on the other side of Pinot Valley Road.
Sir, that's been your five minutes. Sir, that's been your five minutes. I understand you probably have more things, but we're trying to give everybody just the five minutes in all fairness. So we do want to respond. The three things I heard was streetlight outages, new trash cans, and there's something on Adobe Road that you didn't quite get. But I think the trail, they've got a trail, yeah. My guess is the streetlights and the trash cans are Public Works projects or just correction items. There's lamp outages, there must be a way to, for people to put a ticket in or something and say, hey, the light's out.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if those are PG&E poles, or are poles? Do we have maintenance of those poles? I mean, that's something I'd have to talk to Public Works Mishra because if they're, if they're PG&E poles, sometimes they, they're responsible, the responsible party. But we need to either put tickets, repair tickets into with them or what. But I'll have to check with Public Works Director Mishra on that. In regards to the trail, I don't have an answer for the trail yet. And so that's something I'm still working on. So, if who's responsible for that, what it entails and all that, so.
Okay. Yeah, one of the things on this is, and it seems like it should be a no-brainer, but it's not happening, is the response to changing of the timing of the lights due to the time change. That should be going like clockwork every single year. And this is not, I mean, I've heard this, I mean, I've been doing this here for 17 years, and I've heard it, half, half the amount of years I've heard that happen. So it's not just the current, you know, group now. It's semi-traditionally and not a very good tradition to have in terms of not being able to turn the lights on when they're supposed to go on.
Right.
So that, you know, the person on the phone makes a valid point that, you know, we have to switch all our lights and our clocks and all that kind of stuff at home. Why can't the city do it?
Right.
So I don't know whether we can get an idea of why, what's going on with Public Works? What's their process and thinking about this? I know if we were the city council, we'd sure be hearing about it.
Right.
So I'd be curious to see what's going on with that. Why isn't that happening?
Yeah, I'll have to check. I mean, I know Sanjay won't be until next week. However, I'll check with KJ, he's our Public Works specialist. And so I'll see what, see what we can do there and try and get those things changed. I'm not quite sure who does it. I'm not quite sure if it's us or if it's PG&E, that there's automatic software to do that. But that's something I'll find out.
If he's talking, or I'm thinking he's talking, it's us.
Okay, down by on San Pablo or the ones down Pinot Valley?
On Pinot Valley Road. That's us.
Yeah, gotcha.
Everything, everything out there in front is us.
Okay.
The, on San Pablo Avenue, some of it's PG&E, but some of it's us. I can't tell you what the split is on that, but I know that's, that is a mixture. But everything on Pinot Valley Road was put in by redevelopment. When you meet, it's all us.
Okay, all right. So I'll have to follow up with the Public Works staff to see where that's at.
And then there was one other point about the trash cans. Do you have any records of whether there's supposed to be trash cans going out to the dog park in the Adobe Road area or what quantity?
That I don't know. I mean, that was also, that was also handled by Tamara Miller when she was here. So I'm not sure, I wasn't privy to that. So, I mean, I can find out and get something back to the commission and at least let you know where we're at on that. So I'm not sure.
That seems like it would be a good idea to, you know, know where there's expected to be trash cans at the very least.
Yeah, that's five years now. I remember that when I was in my city council time, we were getting those.
The trash cans?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's five years ago.
Okay, that's before my time went, so I'll have to go back and check and see where all those went.
Do we have an idea of just, does Public Works have a backlog regarding the lights? Because I remember that caller calling in, just the Community Service Commission with the same issue of just, and I believe the city said it was a matter of the supply chain, about the light bulbs needing to be put in. But just, is it just staff or supplies? Or just how, how backlogged are they with these projects? Are they keeping track of that?
That, I mean, I don't, I don't keep track of what Public Works does in terms of project management, so I'm not sure how or where they are in terms of backlog or that. I know during this time of the year, they're very busy with, you know, because they're doing the Christmas stuff, and they're doing other, they have other items that they're doing. So I don't know, I mean, like I said, I can check tomorrow and see where they're at with the, with the traffic, with the, with the streetlights, especially with the streetlights. So, and the Adobe Trail, I'm just not quite sure where they left that off at in terms of repairs or that. So that I need to find out.
Okay, and thank you again, sir, for your comments. I hope we'll try and bring some of these back to you. Justin, are there any other citizens to be heard?
I don't know, that's all the comments for now.
Great, thank you. I'm going to close Citizens to Be Heard. Agenda item, or letter B, meeting minutes, the Planning Commission meeting minutes from September 25, 2023. Have a chance to review. Have any comments or questions on the meeting minutes? Commissioner Bender?
No comments or questions.
Vice Chair Manis?
No comments or questions.
Commissioner Benuelos?
No, I don't have any comments.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
No comments or questions.
And Commissioner Sandoval?
No comments or questions.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Take a roll call, please. Commissioner Lam Julian?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Yes.
Commissioner Bender?
Yes.
Commissioner Manis?
Yes.
Commissioner Benuelos?
Yes.
Chair Benzouli?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Okay. Agenda letter E, public hearings. We have no public hearings on the agenda tonight.
Nope.
Okay. F, old business, no old business. Item G, new business. Item number one, objective development and design standards, a status update on the ongoing work. Planning Manager Hannam, is that, that's all you?
That'd be me, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to kind of give the commission an update, pursuant to our Chapter Program 13 in our city adopted housing element, the city has been, is developing objective development standards, design standards for review for multifamily housing and mixed-use development applications. In addition, of course, to SB 9, housing In addition, course, test SB nine, housing element thirteen was developed in response to state housing laws and including the Housing Accountability Act. All of these laws have significantly restricted localities from applying what we call non-objective or subjective standards, development standards to the review of how, of a housing project of two or more units. Only adopted standards that do not require interpretation are allowed to be used to deny eligible housing projects. Implementation of project program thirteen will ensure that the city has a robust set of predictability and adopt development standards that will provide for multifamily developers, and also provide a clear and streamlined review and approval process. In turns, the city will set clear expectations for the design of multifamily developments in Pinot. As the commission is aware, we just, we assign this, we assign this task to the ad hoc committee, the Design Review Committee, to assist in the development of these standards that will ultimately be reviewed by the full planning commission for recommendation. The odds work includes basically review and updates of the three corridor specific plan, which was last updated in two thousand eighteen, the zoning code, which was last updated in two thousand twenty, and the Old Town Design Guidelines last updated in nineteen ninety-seven. In terms of the zoning code, the zoning code has had numerous, numerous changes between the major impact, which was done in two thousand ten to the zoning code, and it's had minor amendments acquire, the majority of those, of the code is still two thousand, the two thousand ten code, and so we're looking to update that and, and as well. So I kind of, I kind of, which you've kind of seen this before, you know, I've kind of, we've talked about the house, the new housing laws that have, that have required us to move into these more objective development design standards such as SB, what we call Senate Bill thirty-five or SB thirty-five, as well as the Housing Accountability Act, which establishes state overarching policy for, for local governments that may not deny, reduce the density of, or make it feasible, affordable, or market rate housing development projects, or emergency shelters, or farmworker housing. That was, these, those have all been passed within the last two or three years. Also, Senate Bill three thirty, which went into effect in January one, two thousand twenty, which establishes that, that we're prohibited from rezoning or imposing new development standards that would reduce capacity for housing or adopting new design standards that are not objective. The bill also defined previously undefined terms such as objective standards and complete application, and set forth vesting rights for projects that use new pre-application process. And basically, a vested right is, is that when you apply and your application is complete, all the requirements that are, that are in place at the time of the, the complete application, apply throughout the entitlement of the project. And so, and of course, of the building of the project, so that's kind of what a vested right is. I kind of outlined what a subjective and objective standard is. Being a subjective standard, being a requirement that are subject to interpretation, where objective standard is a measurable, quantifiable, easily defined, and enforceable requirement. So basically, we also take a look at, you know, as part of the state law, the recent changes that set these pretty short time limits on determinations of application completeness and whether the application complies with the jurisdiction adopted standards. Nowadays, once, once we've, once we have, if, if the city goes above and beyond those guidelines, then those projects automatically become, automatically become complete, and then we must adopt or review the project based on the standards at the time of the completeness of the application. We, all, state law also describes certain, certain eligible projects as reviewed under ministerial review as opposed to discretionary review, of course, ministerial review is reviewed by staff most, most likely, and then, of course, a discretionary review would be by the planning commission. And so, basically, in terms of the ministerial review as well, the development approval involving no personal judgment by the public officials to be asked through the wisdom of carrying out the project, or, you know, we must ensure the proposed development meets all applicable objective standards for the proposed action, but uses no special discretion or judgment in reaching a decision. Whereas a ministerial review, most often, a staff level, staff level review means a staff person at the local agency reviews the app, often using a checklist, which we are in the process of preparing, and compare the application materials, i.e. the site plan, the project description, all the, all of the standards which, which is submitted by the, by the, by the applicant. So basically, table two gives us a, pretty much, was the difference between discretionary and ministerial review. And so with that, in two thousand twenty-two, the city contracted with a professional planning consulting firm, WRT, and Sustainable Community Planning, to evaluate and make recommendations for the updates of the city's three major design documents, basically the zoning subdivision code, the Pinot Municipal Code, of the Pinot Municipal Code, the three corridor specific plan, and the Old Town Design Guidelines. And so what we've done is, is that after reviewing the three documents, the consulting team and staff cataloged all existing standards as being either subjective or subjective. And then finally, and then all existing subjective standards were evaluated in terms of ease of conversion to objective standards, and then finally, recommendations were produced regarding how to best to refine and in many cases, develop objective standards. So, in table three, we provide an overview of regulations contained in the PMC as well as the three corridor specific plan and the Old Town Design Guidelines. So of this, all, all of these codes and guidelines contain development regulations that are a mix of, one, either objective standards that are independently verifiable, and two, subjective provisions that are open to interpretation or within the purview of decision makers. Additionally, additionally, the review noted some development entitlements, regulations that contain procedural relying on discretionary and therefore subjective judgment by a public official or decision-making body which is not permissible for certain qualified residential projects. And again, those projects are the two or more units in terms of projects. So, the reviews reveal the following opportunities for adjustment and refinement and clarity, and so, again, a lot, a lot of you have seen this before in terms of the Pinot, Pinot Municipal Code, talks about building height, those types of things, discretionary entitlements, where the codes provide detailed regulations for various entitlements in terms of plan check, administrative use, administrative design review, with thorough submittal requirements and procedural regulations, but lack objective review. So we require them to submit a whole bunch of material so that we can review, however, the, based on our codes, they feel that there's more, there is an emphasis more that we need to have more objective standards instead of the, the subjective standards that are, that are outlined in our codes. In terms of the basic, in terms of the three corridor, so I, we, that's vilified, that is identified in the three corridor plan that the zoning ordinance and the, and the Pinot Municipal Code. So I kind of just wanted to kind of give you a place of where we're at right now and the overall timeline. I submitted a timeline way back when I submitted the report, kind of looked at the timelines of what's been completed, what's in progress, of where we're at in the process, and where we think we're gonna be here with getting this to the city, to, to the full planning commission and the city council for the approval. We have, so I'm just gonna go straight to the timeline. As part of the ad hoc committee, we've completed the review of the three corridor specific plan. We have completed, we have, we are, we have gone through the portions of the municipal code, and right now, we are currently working on the Old Town Design Guidelines. So, and that, those are in progress right now. We are, so the zoning code, which is the, the big document, I mean, that's, that's a huge undertaking. We've already found some of the, I mean, Justin and I had done, or mainly Justin has done some preliminary work on just finding some inconsistencies within the code itself, let alone whether it's objective or, or subjective standards. And so we're working, we're working with the ad hoc to go over some of those to see where we, where we can review some of those and improve some of those standards and where they're identified, and then create the checklist for the developers when they submit. So what we're trying to do is, at the end of the day, we, when we hand out the development, the application that gets submitted back, we can come back to a checklist, check it off, what needs, what's there, what's not there, as part of the objective standards, either have to return to them, or if there are, if there are standards that they feel that even though they're objective, they don't feel are necessary, then we can, we, and correct me if I'm wrong there, Alex, that we can come back to the planning commission for a review of those standards to make sure that those standards are being met, if I'm not mistaken. So we still got a way to go in terms of combining all into one document, and, but we're still hoping to get that to you by, in April, is what we're trying to do, and we will probably, I mean, the schedule's kind of been, kind of morphed on the way we've kind of, as we've, as the committee has gone through the document, that we have, you know, there's been changes on how we, how we were gonna do it. So, but we are on, in progress, I think we're still on time to make that April deadline and get it to you. And, and so that's kind of where we're at with that project. It, it's, it's been a long project, but I think we're coming, at least with the, with the design guidelines, we should be finishing that up, and then, and then we'll start really preparing some checklists and getting some checklists prepared, and, and we've got some good examples of what other cities have done as well, so we'll be, we'll be guiding our, guiding our guidelines towards another, and, and getting them in fashion to, to bring to you in a full document. So with that, that's all I really have with that item, unless you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions that you have?
Remind me, who's actually on the ad hoc committee?
What's that?
Who's on the ad hoc?
Oh, right now, it's Commissioner Bender, Vice Chair Menes, and, and Commissioner Martinez. However, and I probably need to talk to Alex about how we're gonna do this, or if we can do this is, member Martinez, because of health issues, needs to pull off of the committee because of health issues. And so the question is that we do have an alternate, can we use that alternate for, on this project or at all? Or we just run with the two that we have? Okay.
Add a, a new member to this-
Okay.
-topic, or there'd now be four people, a quorum of the commission that have been working on this.
Okay, okay.
So it needs to unfortunately stay at that number.
Okay, so it's just gonna be John, Commissioner Bender, and Vice Chair Menes, and myself, so, the rest of the way. So, again, with that, that's, that's all I have, Chair.
No, I don't have any comments, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Commissioner Benuelos, yeah?
Okay. Some of these things, I kind of think, I'm thinking of the Old Town stuff, where the very nature of trying to put Old Town buildings and areas in there in these neat little boxes and call them objective, seems to be a huge waste of time, because nothing's gonna work in that. You can say, okay, we can, every, every building, if you want to do this, you go back five feet this way, give every one foot of this, almost no buildings will count, will, will work with that. So what do you do?
Well, in most cases, I mean, and once the codes are changes, I mean, most of buildings would be called legal non-conforming uses at, at which point. So as long as they continue to operate in the manner that they are, then there's really no, in terms of the physical building, in terms of, now, if there is, you know, different paint schemes or different, or different modifications to the building, at which point, then we would have to take a look at the guidelines and the checklist and see where it would fit within there. But in terms of the building, it would pretty much, because there could be some issues with the buildings and the way they're constructed. However, we, as part of going through the downtown, that's something that, that the committee is looking at, because we know that some of these buildings probably won't be able to make some of the, some of the objective standards, but they will still be able to operate under legal non-conforming uses once we change the code. Because right now, nothing has changed, so they're all legal, at least, they're all legal, they're all legal uses at this point. And so, it, it's when we change the code is when, that's when it'll, it'll start happening. And we'll identify what will be, what we would call legal non-conforming, what will, once we get, once we get all the guidelines set.
Okay, the other thing you have, you have the Old Town specific area plan that overlaps into some of the San Pablo Avenue specific area plan, which had some specific types of things to do in terms of setbacks and things like that for buildings that would be replacing older ones if there were, some things are going to be rebuilt.
Right.
So what takes precedence over that? Which, which specific area plan is gonna take precedence over that, because you have two, two taking the space of one?
Well, right now, the specific plan would, would carry the authority, I mean, the specific plan, at least in-
Yeah, but which one?
Within the corridor. No, we only have one. We have one three corridor specific plan, and we have an Old Town subarea with, which is within the, which was, which is within the San Pablo corridor. So, Avenue Corridor, so the Old Town, within, the guidelines within that area would, would quote rule unless we go and, unless we change it in some way in terms of a design standard in that particular subarea, then it, then that would carry the weight, because the specific plan would be amended to, to carry that, so, besides the guidelines. So, not only would, not only would the Old Town guidelines be adopted, but so would the changes to the specific plan. So the Old Town Subarea would still be the guiding, guiding force for the Old Town. The guidelines would be the guidelines, the public realm, the public and private realm, because those are areas that had a lot of objectivity and subjectivity, would carry probably most of the weight compared to the Old Town guidelines. However, the Old Town, we would try to use the Old Town guidelines in, in areas such as, you know, the, the, try and maintain the, the, like the Queen Anne's and, and all of the historic structures. However, we have to remember that these new rules are all for multifamily projects or two, more projects that are either two units or more. So that's what these new objective and, objective guidelines are for. So, that's, long answer, short answer is, specific plan wins, Old Town Subarea is the guiding factor within, unless, unless a whole new specific plan within the downtown area was defined, and right now, we don't have one.
Okay. Yeah. I'm not very encouraged. I guess I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Vice Chair Mathieu, do you have a comment?
Sure, just a couple of points with regards to Assistant Attorney Mog's comment earlier. I'm guessing that even though we're bringing this up and sort of introducing the things that we've discussed to the commission as a whole, that it doesn't count as a new thing when it goes back to the subcommittee?
That's correct, you're discussing this right now in an open public meeting, notice, open public meeting. You can't discuss, a quorum of the, of the board can't discuss something within, excuse me, of the commission can't discuss something within its subject matter jurisdiction, ever outside of it. And so, you've already discussed this matter with the Commissioner Martinez, so you can't discuss it with anyone else, or you would add someone, that would be inside or outside of the ad hoc committee. The only place you can discuss it with any other commissioner would be in a notice meeting.
So it's a Brown Act notation?
That, that's correct.
And then, let's see. I think I had sort of a secondary follow-up question. I noticed that one of the topics that was brought up was that sort of a state emergency ordinance that was lasting through two thousand twenty-five, so that there can be no new subjective ordinances, if I'm reading that correctly. So does that mean that corrections we're making, if they don't rise to a level of being an objective ordinance for whatever reason, just get discarded as invalid?
I'll, I'll, yes, I don't, I don't think they do, but-
And I don't think the plan is any, the, the purpose of this update is to create objective standards.
Right.
We, like you said, you know, we cannot adopt new subjective standards. The ones that we have now can remain, although they're often unenforceable for the reasons that we've discussed, you know, previously, for at least as to multifamily development, right? This doesn't apply to commercial development or a single-family home. It applies to multifamily or, or mixed use, that's, you know, two-thirds plus residential.
Right. The reason why I'm asking is because we've been going over the Old Town Design Guidelines in particular, but they're sometimes at a greater level of subjective detail than the specific plan design guidelines. So, I'm wondering, ultimately, when this goes out to, to be objectified, it goes to the planning commission, it goes to the council, would only the elements of the Old Town Design Guidelines that were made objective be able to be adopted? Or would there, would it be able to be revised more broadly if it's adopted? Because right now, the Old Town Design Guidelines seem to be in sort of this legal limbo space.
Yeah, we, we can only adopt new Old Town-
Yeah, we can, we can only adopt new Old Town. We can only adopt new objective requirements. We can't adopt new subjective requirements. So if, you know, we're simply moving subjective requirements around from one document to the other, but it's not a new requirement, you know, that that's fine, we're not, it's not a new requirement. You are certainly correct that the Old Town design guidelines are very subjective. In fact, the beginning of them says they're not binding, which means the whole thing is subjective, even the objective parts of it are subjective. So, you know, that that's the reality of it. You know, the objective standards is what, you know, the legislature and state law has really limited the city to enforce it.
Okay, I think that's all my questions and comments for now.
Commissioner Bender, anything?
No commas.
Commissioner Julian, or Commissioner Sandoval?
No comments.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Yeah, I did have some kind of more of, I guess it's more like a question, kind of like a request.
Sure.
Would we be able to kind of see like a before and after, to basically see what had been kind of changed and what it was like, what was changed or what it had, what it was changed to? Or is it just, or is it just way too much?
There, it's, it's, it's a bit, it's a big lift for the whole document. What we, as Justin and I are gonna have to sit down and because of this, I mean, the especially with specific plan, the Old Town guidelines is that this could be, as we get closer to the end, as we start rolling these things out, I don't think, I, I think just for everybody's sanity, that because when you see it all in one big picture, it's going to be really big. And so we'll probably be rolling it out in sections as we, as we get everything completed and we get closer to the end where we've, and we've developed the checklist, then we'll start rolling it out. So it's probably going to be a number of meetings. And in fact, I was talking about this with Lily today, and because of the timelines that we that we are now under with council, it's going to be, it'll probably be easier to roll out and more of like where we do like a three meeting, like a three meeting, like our regular meetings, there may be a meeting in the middle so that we can go over it, so that it's, that you don't have to wait every two weeks or three weeks to review the next section. So that's something that we're taking a look at the calendar to see when we start rolling it. Because when we do, I'm going to ask the commission for a special meeting in between once we start so that we can keep the momentum going. And so then we can just roll it right into the council and 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 move it that way. So but you will get the before and after. So you'll see what's, you'll see what's been changed, you'll see what we changed it to. So, so yeah, you'll see all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick follow-up, is he intent to like give us sections and vote on specific sections or just give us sections and then we vote on the whole thing all at the end?
That, we're still debating on how we're going to do that, just because there could, if we adopt, the scary part that I'm worried about is, is that if we adopt, let's say we do this, let's say we do the zoning code first, and then we get in the specific plan and we say, oh, well, we already adopted the, then we've got to go back and amend. So what'll probably, how this will probably roll out is that we will review each of the documents and then come back and then vote on the whole thing. So that, so that nothing, everything stays in draft form until we're ready to adopt. Nothing gets approved directly and moved forward.
Yeah, we were doing the zoning ordinance and generated the specific area plans. There was concern about that, so we did the specific area plans first.
Right.
And then the zoning ordinance.
Right.
That way, if anything was was missed or became in conflict, it was scooped up by the zoning ordinance at the end.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of, that's, that's a, that's a good point because that's what we might be doing. So I was telling Lily the same thing regarding the zoning code, because that's the big, that's the, that's the catch-all, that has to be the catch-all. So in terms of, and and the way each of these documents have been approved in the beginning, you know, for example, the the design guidelines were adopted by resolution, the specific plan and general, the general plan and specific plan were adopted by both ordinances and resolutions. And of course, the zoning ordinance is always, changes are done by ordinance. So there's, you know, there's also all these read, I mean, you'll be making recommendations to the council, but they'll have, you know, second and third readings potentially on these documents. So that's why, you're right, probably the zoning ordinance will be coming last, just because that'll be the catch-all if if there are major changes to the other two that that reflect the zoning ordinance. But, but it'll be rolling, it'll be rolled out in just every, probably we'll have a lot of meetings during that time. So around April or May, be be ready to go.
I just have one comment from my fellow commissioners. It would be a good idea if you haven't read the document published by HCD, How the Community Develops, They Prepare Guidelines Regarding Design Objectives. It is something worth reading to get your head around what the task is.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, I was just gonna say, and and again, there are other cities that have done some objectives guidelines, so you might also want to take a look at what some of the other cities are doing right now. So just so when you, when when ours come forward, at least you have an idea of what's of what's happening and what and what's going on. Because this is a big, this is a big lift. This is, and it's going to be, there's a lot, there's going to be a lot of stuff thrown at you. And so the more you can kind of catch up now or do some early reading now, it'll, it'll help you out.
Do you know what cities are, as an example, to go look at?
We've looked at, we've looked at Los Gatos, we've looked at, that's the primarily the one we've kind of looked at. We've also, the committee can help me if I'm, if I'm missing any, but mostly Los Gatos is the one we've been doing. Antioch, I think, had, had a, had some stuff that we were looking at as well. So, so yeah, so we're looking at both of those cities right now. It would help, I mean, we'll have our own, but just kind of guidelines and looking at what they've been doing.
Was that HCD document, this, because I spreadsheeted a larger chart that compared in contrast, did all the documents? And I remember seeing that like last summer. Was that the one that, that they started?
They had all the yellow and blue and green. Yeah, that's what we're doing right now. We're, we're, we're taking a look at all of those. And if, and I think I gave those to you as attachments way back when. So that's another thing is, is to go back through our own documents that we've given you in the beginning, because I think we gave you what the consultant did. I'm not positive on that. But just to read what the, what are some of the changes you're looking at or what we're looking at.
But the document from HCD, I think the importance of it is even lawyers for YIMBY have commented that, you know, SB 35 is like a 40,000 word document. The HCD, they obviously had to publish it because it's the only way planners, commissioners, architects could begin to even understand what SB 35 is really about in a concise way. And as a reminder, SB 35 is going to sunset, but it's being replaced. And apparently, it's been signed by the governor, so it'll be a new, a newer version of it.
Yeah.
With the same, and it may be, and also enhanced requirements, actually.
I'd also note for anybody of the public who's interested in reading the HCD document that this is a relatively short one. It's about 29 pages. It's written to be relatively simple and clear to read. It's got tables, charts. So, you know, for for the general public, if you're interested in sort of how we're supposed to look at or what the heck objective actually means, it's one of the better government documents I've read on that line, and I recommend it.
Well, thank you. At the end of this, anybody else with any questions or comments on this agenda item? Okay. Moving on to item number two of new business, the Planning Commissioners Academy.
Sorry, Chair, there is a hand raised online if you wanted to take that question for item G1.
Sure.
Okay, this is from a person with phone number ending in 5748. Please press star six when you are ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
I was a member of the public and speaking for those who almost got passed over again. This happened before in other meetings with the City of Pinot. But anyway, I had three items that are related to the objective standards to some degree and maybe not, but I, I would just like to present the commissioners and ad hoc committee with, and the, and the planning commissioner, hand them with these three items. Going back to the Old Town Pinot signage codes and so on, case in point, the old building that sits on the corner of San Pablo and Tenet, which is one of several buildings in that main block neighborhood, is the Antlers Bar Saloon. Now, Antlers Bar has a big sign that's lit up morning, noon, and night, but maybe just at night, that overhangs the sidewalk, maybe even protrudes to the curb right on the street that says Antlers. And it's, and it's, and it's a big, large lit sign. So that being said, are you going to give them a pass to grandfather them in because they've been there for that long and all the other poles around it somehow worked their way in between the front and back of the sign? Or could you, could you not say that if there was a possible violation of a building code for other tenants or other buildings like that new massage spa salon, case in point, they raked that poor lady over the coals down there on San Pablo and APM next to the liquor store about her signage in the window and what have you. But Antlers gets the pass for having a, a big distracting sign hanging over the sidewalk. And and maybe for that matter, certain businesses maybe could be or should be levied a, a variance fee for the exception that you're going to grant these businesses. The city's always looking for ways to charge taxpayers more money and businesses, well, there's, there's a good one for grandfathering these variance signs in. So if they still want that big sign there, and the city council and or the planning commission is going to prove that they can pay, you know, maybe an extra $500 a year for that, for every sign that every other building has. The other item, case, case in point, would be the, the parking lot that sits over there behind Tina's, and I forget the name of it, it's something Parkview and Fernandez serves Fernandez Park and Tina's and the Playhouse, and it also serves part of the tenants, as well as the park and rec office building, buildings there. It's not a big parking lot, but when that was designed, they failed in in two ways with regard to the ADA, which may have been cut in later. The, the, the ADA ingress isn't striped properly, and I fell down there off the side of the curb during one of the big events in, city held events one night, and I twisted my ankle and scraped up my leg and knee because I, I didn't see the cutaway downgrade for the ADA access in there. And then if you look at the, the parking stalls all on that south side of that parking lot, that front the sidewalk, and across there's the dance studio, and next to that is Antlers, you'll see that nice stone brick wall that's been damaged several times over the last 10 or 20 years, and the city hasn't figured a way to fix that or address that. And that, those kind of things should be written into the code, too. And it's not rocket science. All they have to do is make sure there's a proper safe pedestrian walkway next to that stone wall on both sides of that brick wall, or someone could get hurt, and put up bumper guards, those cement block bumper guards that'll stop the car's wheels from tearing into the wall, whether they back in there or go forward in there. There's three or four, if not half a dozen
Fifteen seconds, sir.
All along that wall and walkway that have all been damaged. And it's the black guy for the city, and it could be a code violation as well. Well, Mr. Mishra can put that one on his list. And lastly, speaking with regard to objective standards, I would like to request on, on the behalf of the public of Pinot, private citizens and the public, that more objective standards or better objective standards should be considered with regard to having more formal
Thank you, your, your, your five minutes is up, sir. Sorry, sorry, your, your five minutes is put up. Thank, thank you, thank you again. You, let's just speak a little longer, your five minutes is up, though. Some of those sounded like general code items, and some of them were more into the grandfathering existing items in. I'm not sure if those are the totally the purview of the design standard or not, or if they're just part code things, but
Well, it's definitely not, I mean, if they're, if the standards change for signs in that particular area, I think the Antler sign was approved way back when under, and it was, it was existing sign, it was approved legally through a long time ago. So the sign standards haven't changed that much over the last 10 or 20 years. So, but however, if they were to change the sign, it would have to be in compliance with the sign ordinance. The regarding the parking lot, we'll take a look at, you know, if there's some ADA issues regarding those parking lots, and I'll, I'll forward that to, to, to Public Works Director Mishra and about that. And regarding the brick wall, I don't know if those are ours, or if they're other, if they're the property owners and we need to require them to, to fix those. So we'll have to, have to find out who owns some of, some of that, like the brick wall. I'm not sure who owns that. They used to talk about between the dance studio and Antlers, I think that's where we was talking about. And then, of course, the ADA on the sidewalk, I'd have to take a look along Tenet to see what's out there right now. Because there, there'd been improvements done to that building a while ago, so. And I'm sure there was some ADA improvements done to that. So I'll have to check those two out.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Yeah, thank you. Moving on to item
Before I move on, actually, if we could, because there's one point I want to make in response to Anthony's comments. So with regards to the concept of wall damage or basically making sure that spaces are properly maintained, is that something that could properly fall under the objective standards, like making sure that materials are used that can be easily maintained or creating certain level of maintenance or clear path requirements?
Well, clear path requirements are already, already, they're already in the law through ADA. So they've got to have clear path from the sidewalk to the facility or wherever, you know, depending on where it's, it's located. So in terms of that, so clear paths already, already pretty much taken care of. Now regarding the stone, I mean, yeah, we can, we can decide whether or not that, you know, certain materials are used with walls and fences and those types of things, and that can be included as part of an objective standard to make sure for for maintenance issues. But I think it's still, it'll still be up to the, we don't really have necessarily, we do have some control over maintenance if we include, include those as part of the condition of approval of projects. We can include, you know, maintenance conditions and those types of things, but if there are projects that are already been built and already, it'll be, unless they had them in there originally, which I'm pretty sure most of them probably didn't, then it's just a matter of once, once that wall becomes unsafe or once it becomes where it could, you know, hurt somebody, then we could go back to the property owner and say, hey, look, you need to repair the wall based, based on, you know, you know, pictures and here's the evidence of why you have to, of why you have to fix it.
Right. I know we can't go back, just wanted to make sure that we were looking at that going forward so that situations like that don't come up again, ideally.
Okay. Kind of following up on that, if something was done, a project was done and in the conditions of approval, isn't there a couple of generic ones where it talks about maintaining the, the structure, various structures, that kind of things to, so things like that don't happen?
Yeah, most of the time, it's regarding the building, not necessarily the fences or the walls, per se, unless, I mean, unless you're like in a subdivision where, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a maintained by the residents within some type of assessment district within the, within the subdivision, usually in commercial, commercial structures who are putting up walls, usually that, that, usually there is just a requirement to build it and to, I think we did say to maintain it as part of the Safeway project, because I think we required them to maintain the fence. But, I mean, in terms of the downtown, I can't really, I mean, all those projects were built in the 50s and 60s and
Good, we're getting a little off.
Seventies, so.
A little off.
But in future developments, yeah, we can require, there's, sometimes you, there are Uh, but in future developments, yeah, we can require there's sometimes you there are conditions that we can add that require that you are required to maintain those those structures that you're putting up. But most times in terms of the building, not necessarily the 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 walls or or that type of stuff.
Yeah, I think we're getting a little off topic here. Well, it's still objective standard issue. And a common example is over the years, we constantly are fighting Burger King on Fitzgerald because they were required to have a certain level of landscaping, and it'll last about ten, twenty minutes, and then the drop die, and then we would never deal with it. We'd always have to be on them to to maintain their use permit requirements and fix it. And so that
Yeah, if there's something specific.
So that that's kind of an that's a little bit less of a thing than what we're talking about.
Right.
But because we're looking, we we're looking at our stuff that's, I guess, in a sense more code-driven, but.
And not current project-specific, right?
Yeah.
Just general.
Yeah, well, yeah. And um, well, he with the caller was talking about stuff that wasn't current project-specific. So it's just stuff that's just kind of broken, which, and to his point, if you fell down on it, then there is a problem.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of how how if we're.
From an objective standard standpoint, we would we would be able to identify specific materials that would that would, you know, main that have a long life in terms of long maintenance life or something of that nature. Uh, but it would still be ultimately when the projects came in that we would require them um to maintain their whatever facility they build, so.
So that that would have to be written in then, if it isn't, well, it kind of is anyway, but
Yeah.
A little bit more specific.
Yeah, in terms of materials, we could we could probably do it, like I said, you know, longer lasting materials that would require less maintenance. However, there would need to be something as part of the project that would require them to maintain it over a certain period of time and all that, the life of the wall.
We have to be careful because you're starting to sound a little more nonspecific.
Well, that's until I have a project in front of me and a design. But anyway, yeah, I mean, we I mean, there can be conditions of approval that can be added to to help with the maintenance of those issues.
Okay. Are there any other further questions or comments on the objective development and design standards? Great. Uh, moving on to item two, Planning Commissioners Academy, where we discuss commissioner participation opportunity.
This this is a fun one. Just to kind of give the just kind of give the commission of some background. Every year, the League of California Cities, of course, have a number of different uh educational conferences throughout the year. Uh, and this is one of them, the Planning Commissioners Academy. Uh, it used to be called the Planning Commission Institute, um, and that they changed it a while ago. And basically, it's uh the academy is designed for planning commissioners and staff members of all tenures through uh from throughout the state to expand of individuals' knowledge on a wide range of topics. And there's environmental stuff, there's, you know, planning law, there's roles of the planning commissioner, um, all sorts of different courses throughout the three-day period, two and a, oh, yeah, it's about three days, uh, that um that just give you more information about being a planning commissioner and more information on, you know, planning environmental, planning environmental law, best practices for commissions, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and so what I do is I kind of put together a a typical day. Uh, this is probably uh the day that I picked was a probably the Wednesday. Uh, if it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, usually the first day is more group sessions uh with the whole group, whereas day two is the breakout sessions that you go to. And so what I did was I included uh from a past academy, and this is actually from last year, I forget which day it was, but the year just kind of some of the topics that uh that are that are planned uh throughout the throughout the uh throughout the prod- throughout the conference. Uh, there probably be there might be this year, I haven't seen what the schedule looks like this year yet, it hasn't come out. Uh, but I'm sure that it it'll be very similar to this, uh, but maybe ha- have some added things that that have trends in planning that have happened over the last few few years. So that's that's kind of what um what it is. We're budgeted, we're budgeted to have five commissioners go. Um, this year's conference is from March uh third through the sixth.
Six through eight.
Or what?
It's six through eight in Long Beach, I think.
Yeah, it's in Long Beach. Um, where did my attachments go? Where are my attachments? Um, so, yeah, it's in Long Beach. Um, this year, we are, we we allow five to go up um or go out down there. Um, and so I just want to take a head count of how many of you would like to go. Um, again, it's a pretty beneficial conference. Um, and so hopefully um if there's something that if there's someone that would want to go, that um and let me let me get you the
Looked at the new planning commission members. I mean, I think.
I'd like to go.
Yeah, I'd also say I'm interested in attending as well.
Hey, Tim, have you, I mean, I imagine you've gone.
I've never gone in one of these, but.
Oh.
I'd rather have someone else go before I would go.
Okay. Commissioner Menace or Commissioner Bender?
So I guess I've got a couple of questions there. First question would be, I went to one about two years back, I think it was, at the start of my tenure as a planning commissioner. How different would this one be?
Well, I think I think all the conferences are are getting back to their bigger. Uh, I don't know how many went to your to because I think you went in twenty twenty-one, right?
Yeah, so a lot of people were still wearing masks, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I mean, uh, based on 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 what I saw at the last APA conference, there was like over, you know, a thousand people there, a thousand planners. Usually the planning commissioner ranges anywhere between nine hundred to fifteen hundred people. Or, you know, that's including and that includes commissioners, staffs. Um, and um, so, yeah, I I think I think now I think would be even better just because there's more people down there. Uh, usually when it's in Southern Cali- also, you the one you went to was in Northern California, right?
Right.
Yeah, usually the one in Southern California, most of the Southern California cities are there, so it's a little bigger because they can all get there um with their commissions. And so um so it'd be beneficial. Yeah, the dates are March sixth through the eighth. Um, so we kind of want if we want to know early so that we can make reservations and if you guys want to fly or drive or, you know, what's your preference on that? So we'll have to uh
Right.
Do all that, so.
And that segues into my second question. The city also be covering, you know, stuff like hotels, transportation, that sort of thing, given that it would be in Long Beach.
Yes. Yeah, so the city would pay for your conference and your hotel and your travel and your meals.
Okay, then I think you'll be interested.
Okay. So I have three. Do I have four? Five?
So if everybody else who doesn't who should go, that's already said they're gonna go or not, if there was a spare, then I would go.
Okay, so so far, the three newest commissioners or three, one almost newest commissioners are going.
I mean, it's always had to work.
So if you want to go, Tim, we're gonna we're gonna plan for you to go. All right. Nice. So right now, I have four commissioners right now. I've got Commissioner Sandoval, Commissioner Lam Julian, Commissioner Ben Velus, Vice Chairman Es. Anybody else? No?
That's the vacation time.
All right, so I'll be getting all I'll I'll let Lily know tomorrow, and then we'll start getting you all your getting all your stuff ready to go. So and whether you want to fly or drive or we'll get we'll we'll probably still send an email out. So now I think it's beneficial, especially for new commissioners. I think you'll get a, you know, you'll you also get to network with other commissioners uh from all over the state. So I think that's also a pretty good benefit as well to see what trends are happening in there, find out what's happening in their cities. So all the networking stuff is really is is probably more valuable sometimes than the sessions. So so with that, that's all I have on that item. So we're um, that's all I have. Mr. Chair?
Any questions or comment? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item eight, City Planner's Commissioners Report.
Uh, just have a few things. Um, one is we had we got a new application for Pinot, uh, Pinot Shores Two. So it's a new proposal. They're proposing to do one big building instead of two little buildings or one big, one little. Uh, and so we're getting that going through the process. Um, we are working with uh Pinot Vista. We need to finalize the affordable housing agreement and the um and the lot line adjustments. We're in the process of completing those. Um, we are, our staff is in the process right now, setting up individual meetings with the downtown businesses, at least for the hopefully in in December, uh, to talk about parklets and and outdoor dining opportunities. And so we're still working on that on that project as well. Um, of course, we're also working on the objective developments and also implementation of the housing element year one. So there are things that we're already starting to have to to get moving on that. Um, and that's about all I have. At your next meeting, you will have a conditional use permit. Um, so and you'll also have a adopt the schedule for next year. So we'll have that on your next agenda, so uh that's at least so far. So that's all I have tonight, so unless you have any questions.
The Pinot Shores, the building permit application or the new planning?
It's a new planning entitlement.
Oh, to switch, oh, okay.
Yeah, they're starting over.
Oh, they're starting over, oh. Um, any questions on the City Planner's Commissioners Report?
I think this will be the point where we make the commission report part, right? If we have things to report, which I think I do.
Um, or that's or the communications?
Or communications, yes, so I'll wait on that, though.
But no comments on the Commission Planning Manager's Report? Great. Do I do?
Is there an update for Safeway?
Uh, the update for Safeway is that we have talked to the uh new owners, uh, and they are working on putting their plan together right now. Uh, we're hopefully um, we're not, we're we're supposed to have an update with them in about right after the holidays. And so we'll have a much better idea of of how far along they are and and what the and what they're up to right now. But they are in the process of of working with other property owners and and in the in that area. And and so, yeah, so we'll have, I think we'll have an update for you guys, probably at your February meeting on that.
Any other further comments or questions?
Chair, I see a hand raised online if you wanted to take the question.
On the City Planner Commissioners Report?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, person with phone number ending in five, seven, four, eight, um, please press star six when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes, uh, along the lines of the um Mr. Director Hanum Port uh regarding the Safeway and uh the other build outs. I I'd like to know what's happening with the uh the two-part question, the the seven eleven build out, because that was being put on hold for a while because of PG&E again. So we give it back to PG&E to hold that up. Uh, but um, oh, as well as um the other build out uh across from CVS Pharmacy, that uh multi-unit building that's going up in the old doctor's hospital property, and uh also uh public health and safety issue with regard to trying to request at this time uh a um formal traffic study review on that whole corridor there from Fitzgerald Drive up and down Apian Way, uh, including Tara Hills with the Safeway build out, all the new properties, the Kmart build out property, and the and the uh problems we're having with Pinot Middle School up and down and along Mann Drive. I think the planning commission, if not the city council, needs to step up to the plate.
Sorry, sir, that do you read something specific related to Planning Commissioners, Planning Managers Report?
That can be put in
Sorry, Mr. Speaker?
Objective standards as well.
Sorry, Mr. Speaker, if you have any specific comments related to planning managers, Hanum, I I heard the doctor's hospital, but I don't see how the rest of it.
Why are you cutting me off in the middle of my statement again? I I haven't finished. You could give me some some uh, you know, thirty seconds or twenty seconds to wrap up.
The the chair was simply asking you, who's reminding you, this is not another general public comment. This is a comment on the planning um director's report. And so he's asking you to
That's what I said it was. It was the planning director's report with regard to Safeway, with regard to the build out on his report that is normally done at the end of the meeting. And it's not just a a random public comment. It's all tied together.
Okay, well, I feel you have to leave comment on the the Safeway.
I know you're all gonna go home by nine o'clock, but, you know, let's uh give the public their due diligence too and 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 promote public engagement here. The the formal traffic study uh was done a long time ago, and I don't know how formal it was. I think we need to update that.
Okay.
Can I ask?
You, as I heard, update on the doctor's hospital, the Safeway project.
Doctor's Hospital, Mann Drive with Pinot Middle School, the Safeway, the Safeway build out.
I'll I'll answer.
And the traffic study.
Yeah, I can answer. I can I can answer those very quickly.
And the Kmart, the Kmart build out, all contributing to and the seven eleven store, all contributing to to ma- major public health and safety issues for schoolchildren and people driving out through Main Quarters in our city, up and down Apian Way, on the on-ramp, the off-ramp, the ingress, the regress, big tractor trailers going in and out of Safeway delivering gasoline with forty-foot trailers of of grocery products, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, we we would definitely respond to all those. Do you have any other? You have still a minute or so. Do you have any other further updates you'd like?
I I would like I would like that incorporated into the uh objective standards for uh
Okay, we'll we'll go ahead.
As well.
Okay, we'll we'll uh we'll go ahead and answer those questions real quick. In terms of Apian Village, uh, they did their their final grade. They're still have to, we still have to record a map uh for the final part of their subdivision map for the for the twenty-six buildings. Uh, we also still have to finish the affordable housing agreement for their moderate income facilities. So we're still working with them on that. Uh, the seven eleven, that's strictly a uh, we're getting close to finalling the building. Uh, however, the big the big stall right now is um is PG&E. We're still waiting for them. And they've got, but they're working with the um, they're working with the uh the property owner, PG&E and the property owner are working together to try and get that get that problem rectified. And regarding this 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 traffic study, um, at this point, I mean, it's something that we're looking at. Um, it's something that's 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 not just a small little document if we were to do something of that nature. Um, so we are, uh, we have taken, we've had talked about it, but we haven't really come to a conclusion. We probably will need direction from the council to do something of that nature because what he's asking is is a big ask. That's not just a little, I mean, you're talking a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollar traffic study to include all the stuff that wants that needs to be included in that. So that that would have to be a capital improvement plan to to do something of that nature. Um, and that hasn't been, at this point, all of those projects that have been that have been adopted around that area have all had some traffic analysis to it uh to them, so uh just not one big comprehensive one. So there have been some traffic analysis in terms of what those projects would bring. And those they're still in, just incorrect if I'm wrong, but those are still on the website, right, under pending projects?
Yeah, there there should still be the traffic study for um the Apian Village project up on the project, current projects.
Okay, and and Pinot Vista is probably should be the, should the, okay, so so if anybody wants to look online, uh, all the traffic studies that were done for those individual projects are online to take a look at what type of terms of traffic generation is being created by those projects. Um, and just a reminder to the commission, we can only mitigate the traffic for those specific projects. We can't mitigate pass-through traffic. So there's a lot of pass-through traffic that goes through uh all over Pinot, through San Pablo, through Apian Way. And so uh so that's, but anyway, that's that's here nor there. Uh, regarding the Mann Drive, that's the traffic signal in Mann Drive that will be uh as part of the Pinot, uh, the Apian Village project. So when they get there, going into and putting in their traffics, their fourth leg of the traffic signal and the re-timing of all that. Um, so that so that'll be addressed when that project gets going. We're hopefully that they're looking for a spring build or start building in the spring, so that's what we're hoping.
And then I think the Safeway, which I think we may have covered in the Kmart, not the Kmart, but the old the old Kmart.
Yeah, this the the old Kmart, I mean, the right now, they're in the pro- as again, they're they're looking to do some demoing probably uh next spring. Uh, and uh and then get ready to submit their plans and do that, but we're we're And, and then get ready to submit their plans and do that, but we're, we're finalizing the lot line adjustment that they're doing as well as the affordable housing agreement, which is pretty much almost done, I think, I think, I think we just have to make sure that, that their comments were okay, then I think we can move it forward. But I'll be working with Alex on that. But in terms of building, we, we probably won't see a building permit for them until next, probably next summer. And of course, since I'm there, might as well, I mean, Vista Woods, they're continuing to, continuing to move forward and getting their first phase in. And they're still working on wings, C and D, which are the back phases. So they're, they're getting close to that, so. And of course, Saha, you see Saha, they're starting, it looks like they're starting to frame a little bit, so get those, get that, so they're moving forward. And we're working with B C R E to finalize their, their things that we need to do with them so they can get started. So I think next year, we'll have a lot more going on those projects next year in terms of starting and getting construction and getting building permits and all that next year. So that's, so those are the updates on those projects for the public, so.
Okay. Thanks. Is there any other comments? Okay. I think move out to item I, Communications, I know there's a couple of commissioners that had Communications. I know Commissioner Lam Julian, you asked for something on Communications?
So I participated in some community engagement events, the Pinole Soil Eclipse movie night in Fernandez Park. I was interactive advisor at the high school, the Pinole Walk and Roll, CAC meeting, Veterans Day at Fernandez Park, canvassing for United Against Hate Week. And then I attended the California Versus Hate and kickoff rally at Civic Center Park in Berkeley. And then I attended a women's leadership conference in New York. Just to get some feedback from the community and just some best practices that other municipalities have kind of come up with for community engagement and community building. And I would like to request for a future item for the planning commission to, to talk about community engagement options, possibilities.
As an agenda item?
Yes.
As an ongoing agenda item?
Ongoing agenda item, or just to discuss if other commissioners would be interested in doing some community engagement activities like at the farmer's market or even just a pop-up just similar to the. What was it, the fellow? For the Pinole Walk and Roll, just to get feedback from the community. And then we would be able to do, give, provide feedback to the community about the different projects going on and meet the people where they're at. So then they have an idea of what we're working on, what we do and what's happening around town and then give us kind of feedback right then and there.
I like the idea, are we compliant with the Brown Act stuff, if we have informal meetings about things, you know, often a pop-up?
That is fine for subgroups of the, you know, you can't all either talk about it, but it's certainly fine if, if some of you want to, you know, less than a majority of you want to, you know, set up a stand or engage with the public somewhere, that, that's fine. I would just, we don't have any projects really pending before us right now, but you don't ever want to discuss in too much detail any pending projects or, you know, you know, commit to taking action one way or another about, you know, specific development projects. But it's fine for, you know, if some of you want to set up a, you know, stand at the farmer's market or anything like that, it's, it's fine.
Would we be able to do a workshop similar to what Development had of just, this is an update on the projects going around in town? Similar, so then if the callers can't make it to the meetings, that it would be similar to kind of.
Can I say this? Well, when we did the, when we did the, all five of the development projects, we did public workshops, we had, where, of course, the problem was it was going through COVID. So most of our stuff was virtual, but all five developments went through a community workshop where people could call in and people could do that. So we, we do do that on the bigger projects that come through. We, we, as part of the, as part of the, before we get to you guys, the projects to you. So that at least we have some, some public outreach besides the normal, our standard noticing and ordinance, you know, all that, all that kind of stuff. So we do do public workshops with the bigger projects and that's something that we established. Because we knew that, and then the first one was Vista Woods and we knew that was, or I think Vista Woods was the first one we did. And, because that was a pretty big project, and so we decided that anything over a certain amount of units would require a public workshop. Either, either in their neighborhood, at city hall, like in the council chambers, just for the consultant to talk about the project and, or the developer to talk about the project and what's the amenities it's going to bring and those types of things. In terms of what you're talking about, if you're talking about like after, after the project's been adopted and where all the projects are and all that type of stuff, yeah, that's, that's not a problem. I, I think it would take a vote of the commission to, to do something like that, to establish if certain members want to do that, I mean, Alex might.
Well, and it might be helpful, you know, if you, we want to put this on the agenda.
Yeah, and talk about.
See what the.
Some options.
What, what it is the commission is interested in, you know, those workshops for us, those were paid for by the applicant. So if you're making a request of staff to put together all of those materials and staff time, you know, there's a cost to that. And, and so, you know, we need, you know, the city manager to weigh in about whether that's, you know, something that he's, you know, willing to authorize or, or not.
Okay, I think it would just be good just to see what our options are, what that looks like, since just at most of these events, I've had the community say they don't really understand what this commission does and they're just not really sure where to go. You direct them to the website and it's just not really easy to grasp versus asking, hey, what does this mean? What's the status on, you know, the Saha project? Just to make it more community-friendly and easy accessible, so then they kind of know what's happening around in their community.
Well, we can do, we can put that on an agenda, I can work with Christie to see what, you know, to kind of get some background and, and work with that. If that's something that the commission would, I think, the commission has to vote on that, right, Alex? If they want that item, or the commissioner, commissioner can ask for an item to be put on the next agenda.
We don't need a, a formal vote, you know, if it's something just by, you know, nods of your head or thumbs up or down, if it's something you're, you're interested.
Consensus?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think you kind of touched on a couple of different things, it sounds like one is project updates and the other is what is the role of the planning commission? How does the public interact with the planning commission? And that may be a different set of topics, but I think they probably all warrant some level of discussion to bring this more forward if, if people are, don't have, have questions or if there's still some confusion out there.
Yes, and then just to be able to put ourselves out there and explain and maybe get their feedback of just what other businesses that the community wants to be brought in and what their vision is for downtown. Most people did not want to read any of the reports, they just really wanted to tell me their thoughts. And I thought it would be great if they could tell all of us.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a separate community kind of economic development committee that works on bringing in businesses, right? I mean, there's a separate, that's a separate part of the city government.
Well, no, I mean, it's all under economic development, under, under community development. I mean, we work with, you know, we, we work with realtors and those type of guys to see what's going on, what's, what's happening and, and that. But I mean, that's kind of, I mean, there's no, I mean, that's the one thing about community development, you, we can go out and recruit businesses all we want, it's whether or not they want to come here or not. They still have the ultimate authority, and so we're working on those strategies. And I know, I think we, I think the city does have an economic development strategy and that, those are things that we're focusing on to help generate businesses coming to Pinole. And, and that's how, you know, I mean, it, sometimes it's, you know, I want this and where's, where's my that? And I want some of these types of developments in my, in my community. And it gets very difficult sometimes that, you know, to, those are people that we recruit, but if, but if they don't make, if they can't make it work, then we put, you know, we put it on the wish list and we keep, we keep going after them and when we hit those, when we hit those milestones that we can get them on there. However, it is good to hear from the community of what is out there and what they're, what they're thinking and what they're, what they're doing. So I mean, I, we, like I said, I can work with Christie and get an agenda item for you guys on your next, at your next meeting. So I have no problem doing that.
Great, are people open to that?
That's how we got Tricia Jones.
Oh. Great, is that?
I'm complete.
Great, anything else, Commissioner Lam Julian?
Nope, I'm complete, thanks.
Great, I think Vice Chairman Es, you had something for Communications?
Sure, but before I get into my communications, just a brief comment on Commissioner Lam Julian's comments. I think that potentially, because I had a quick look at the municipal code and it looks like under section 2.40.030, duties of the planning commission, that point number five says promote public interest in planning and encourages participation of implementing of the general plan. And it seems like that would be a sufficient reason to have, you know, POPs and whatnot, especially as we're moving towards getting the environmental justice element in particular, whenever we get started with that. And the community safety element, that it would be worthwhile having more public engagement there outside of meetings, maybe. With regards to my communications, I want to note that I attended a, another one of the Walk and Roll Pinole Subcommittee meetings and want to update everybody, but there's still the walk, HTTP. Well, it's technically not an HTTPS site, this is more of a comment I've got to all the city's contractors. But it would be beneficial to have the city's websites and contracted websites be HTTPS, not HTTP. Because a lot of the time you're going to have web browsers throw up warnings when you're forcing connections through to an insecure website. But it's Walk and Roll Pinole for the Active Transportation Plan. And then there was also another meeting held on the Parks Master Plan, I think it was the second one. And that you can find information on at, where was it? The city provided link is pinolparksmasterplan.com. And I wanted to highlight that because one of the things they brought up at that meeting was that there was a new survey, which is running through, I believe, December 3rd. On, you know, basically where do you want to see improvements focused in the parks, that sort of thing. So I wanted to highlight that for the general public and make sure people were aware of it. And I believe that's all my communications for this meeting.
Does anybody else? Commissioner Bender?
Yes, I attended a conference at the Turner Center at UC Berkeley on affordable housing. And specifically it was the legislation that was passed in the last session up there in Sacramento. And approximately 60 laws related to affordable housing were passed through the legislature and going to the governor's office, and many of them probably have been signed. Some of them were new, others were just simply dealing with some of them that are sunsetting, like SB 35 in like a year or whatever. It'll, there's a replacement for it with some enhancements, others were just tinkering and dealing with closing loopholes. But some people have a lot of reading to do.
Anyone else have any communications? All right, if there's no, if there's no further items, then our item number J at next meeting will be the Planning Commission regular meeting for December 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.